I want to welcome everybody, everybody to our very first ever historical town hall meeting with an amazing and familiar panel. More about them in a few minutes. The purpose of this town hall meeting is to have an honest, loving, loving heart-to-heart and fruitful, freeing experience RTO family discussion. On the title, context, and content of my last two RTO sermons from the book of Exodus, chapter 14, and here's the title of my two sermons, Part 1 and Part 2, "One Time Delivered Will Not Recovery," that is the title of my last two sermons here. Therefore, Christians must be much more alert, vigilant, and aggressive than ever because not only we are engaged in a much more intense bloody war, but we are also expecting for our Savior, for the groom, Jesus, to come back at any time. And therefore, our lamps must be filled with the oil of our radical intercessions, with the oil of us coming to the Father like Jesus did in Gethsemane, pressing, pressing times, producing clear light in a very dark world and even dark church today. So Jesus said, "Watch and pray." Christians cannot be passive. If you are passive, you must experience a radical revival tonight. The truth is this, and we have to deal with reality, is that many Christians, as we know, and as we learn in our last two sermons, are angry, they are fearful, they are anxious, living in the mystery of so many types of bandages, including the most devastating one, which will freeze you, it will paralyze you from moving forward to do our Father's will, not ours, that is the sin of fear. The Bible mentions fear, not to fear, 365 times. That's amazing, isn't it? One for each day of the year. God our Father Yahweh, the only one who delivers one time will not recover it, promised to Moses, to the people, and to us. In the book of Exodus 14, 13, and 14, he says, "And Moses said to the people, 'Do not be afraid; stand still and see the salvation of the Lord, which he will accomplish for you today. For the Egyptians whom you see today, you shall see again no more forever. The Lord will fight for you, and you shall hold your peace.'" What does that mean? That you will believe and to trust in Yahweh, just like Jesus does. Then Yahweh tells Moses to tell the people, verse 15, he says, "And the Lord said to Moses, 'Why do you cry to me? Tell the children of Israel to go forward,'" what he said. In other words, Yahweh wants his people to believe and trust in him with the secure hope of glory Jesus purchased for us with his blood. So together, together, we can start tasting his honey and his milk as we move forward towards the promised, eat the promised land in freedom, to hallow his name as he fathers us. God wants to father you. He wants to be your Father with his radical love because the very best is yet to come. And what is that? To do greater things that Jesus did, that's what the Bible says in John 14, 12-15, he says, "That we will be able to do greater things than Christ." That's crazy, but that's truth. You see, God our Father Yahweh has made of three basic promises to every one of his children, even in Inglewood, in Wheaton, in Brazil. If you are his child, he made you these three basic one-on-one promises. Number one, he says, "I will," he says, "I will deliver you. I will deliver you one time with no recovery from what, from my justifiable wrath and the bandaged power and guilt of sin." Number two, he says, "I will provide for you all that you need," and then some. And number three, he says, "I will protect you." He said, "I am your permanent fortress." Yahweh says, "I only want for you to do one thing, to obey me," he says, "without delay, so you won't bring me any shame, and hence forfeit my blessings and my benefits." In his book, I write here, in his book, "Your church is too safe." Mark Buchanan said this out of the gate, page 1, he says, "I am bored," as are many people in the church, bored, and also apathetic, passive, testy, lonely, disheartened. We are weary, and weary, and cranky, and sad. It's a long list, and this is the endowment that we have as a church. There's an enormous gap between the life Jesus offered and he promised and the life we are living as Christians. Shame on us. And he said, "We," and we feel it. He said, "What happened? Why are we there?" What is the answer? He said, "When did we start making it our, but our duty to be safe, instead of dangerous, nice instead of holy, cautious instead of bold, self-absorbed instead of counting everything lost?" Like, we read that tonight from Philippia, from my friend Carlos. "Self-absorbed instead of counting everything lost in order to be found by Christ." In other words, many in the church are in bandages, in desperate need of freedom, when the gospel, the gospel, the gospel is in fact a message of freedom rooted on truth and grace to serve and worship our Father for who he is, not for what he's going to give you. He gave you enough already. He gave you redemption already. We don't need nothing else. It is either Christ or nothing. I told my wife today, I said, "Barbara, is the gospel enough? Is the gospel enough to lead us in this ministry? If it's not, we are in trouble. If we need to look to the world to help us out, we are in trouble. If the gospel is not enough, then we cannot be Christians." Keep it 100, to keep it 100, young people, for who he is, and defend his reputation of our good and loving Father with our living testimonies on our highest integrity, highest integrity, in the inseparable and perpetual relationship with God our Father through Jesus Christ and the power of the Spirit, which is at the heart of our discipleship through radical biblical prayer. I always go back to that, don't I? To keep us free in Christ. Jesus said in John 8:31 and 32, and verse 36, he said, "Then Jesus said to those Jews who believed him, 'If you are bad in my word, you are my disciples indeed, and you shall know the truth, and the truth shall make you free. Therefore, if the Son makes you free, you shall be free indeed.'" Finally, so what is our mission? What is our mission? Is that a good question for your men here, you know, I mean, what is our mission? It is. His mission as disciples of Jesus Christ, empowered by the Spirit, as defined by none other than my own wife, our very own Barbara Mill, hallelujah. She said this, so simple, our mission is introducing people to the Father. Does it? Don't complicate anything. Our mission is to introduce, of course correctly and properly, biblically, to everybody, to the Father. Then she says, "If they truly meet the Father, meet him, they will have salvation, they will be delivered, and know their real what? Their real identity." So on that note, let me introduce you to the members of our panel, who to many of you, they are very familiar as you have watched their videos, our last two banks. If you have not watched their videos, just go to Cononia Bank with that cam. You will never be the same. Tonight, beloved, you have a front seat to redemption. Tonight, you have a front seat to radical redemption. I'm not kidding you. I'm not kidding you. This is an amazing team that God has put us together here. I had to twist their arms to be here tonight, all of them together. Amen. As we have delighted in the redemptive stories of radical forgiveness, our redemption. So with that said, can I just begin to ask, Carlos, please, come, Pastor Nelson, come, Pastor Marco, come, Grace, come, Bert, come, please. Fine, you see, you are in the middle, because you're the beautiful lady here. You're the beautiful lady, next to your daughter, next to your daughter. Amen. So before I ask them to introduce themselves in one minute, each of them, in case that you don't know who they are, let me give you some rules. We're going to have town hall meeting, maybe we're going to have many more. But let me give you some deliverance, and we can go into many different routes, but we're going to keep it focused on my last two sermons on the text that we read tonight, and we just want you to be free tonight. Free from any bandage that you may have, from fear, which is the number one bandage. So with that said, I'm going to begin with Pastor Nelson, and then Pastor Marco, of course, Grace, Berrios, my friend Berrios, and my friend Carlos Colon. And then just give us one minute. Number one, who are you? A little bit of your background, and the main thing that you guys believe that Jesus delivered you from, delivered you from. Maybe I could be many, but we're going to get into the questions. Okay, go ahead. The mic is right there. Let's give them a hand, amen.
God bless everybody. I'm just so humbled to be here, first of all. Only by his mercy and his grace am I here. We serve a good God. I'm a pastor by his grace. Every day I ask myself, "Lord, why me?" You know, I don't deserve this. You know, it's just like I can't. But that's the God that we serve, you know, when, when you're able to just humble yourself, God will do great things, and if we can believe God at his word, he's going to do what he says he can do for the glory of God. I've been gang-banger. I was a gang-banger all my life, in and out of prison. Came out of prison, said, "I'm not gang-banging no more," and I went into drug dealing, thinking I was doing something better. I had my son, my, my, my wife, she was a getaway car driver, and forget it. It was a crazy life. I lost so much in this life too, with my, my first wife. She went through so much. Eighteen years of marriage, I lost that. Two daughters that, we, we speak only when I call them, they will not call me. I was always in the streets, in and out. Sometimes I would go for weeks, and then come back home, and then go back again, and it was a real crazy life, in and out of prisons. So I just thank God that he, you know, he not only just delivered me from drugs, and, and he just, he just delivered me from myself. And, and that's the thing that, you know, we can't blame people. We can't blame people. Life is all about choices. And a lot of times, we, we, you know, if I would have listened to my father's advice, even though he didn't know how to give it to me. My father never told me that he loved me. He never hugged me, you know, and it was, he died when I just got out of prison, and it was... But, but God is good. Now I look back, and he didn't have a father or a mother. He was an orphan. I didn't know that. He didn't explain that to me. You know, he was going through his own hell. But, but, but God is, God knows where you've been. God is the one that has the plan for your life. So when I was, when I was introduced to Christ, I, I had to be, I had to be, because he delivered me from trying to get over on everybody. You know, you're trying to get over, trying, all the time being, trying, thinking of yourself, thinking of, "What can I get out of this?" And that's how my life was. I even used my son. I used my, my wife. I used everybody that I could use. Until I, I had to get to the point where they told me, "You got six months to live, if." And I said, "I ain't not going to get no operation." My heart was swollen from the size of three, of three hearts from doing crack cocaine. I became an addict. I was so messed up. But God delivered. I had to drink a fifth of Jack Daniels every night for three years, just to go to sleep. So I had no liver. I smoked six packs of cigarettes a day. So my lungs were gone. When I, when I, when I got a stroke, I went to the hospital. They say, "We don't even know how you're standing here." But that's the power of God. He, he gave me a new heart. He gave me new liver. He gave me new lungs, all in one day, all in one day. That's the power of God. Amen.
Pastor Martin? Good evening, everyone. So glad to be here. I'm humbled to be here today, and I'm here by the grace of God in Christ. I came to Christ when I was 17 years old. I wasn't looking for God, but he was looking for me. And I was sitting in a living room, a living room with my brother. He was five years older than me. I was 17. I was 25. My brother was in a bad place. He was, among other things, addicted to substance. He had a substance abuse problem, and I was kind of following in the same footsteps. I was on that, on that road too. And, long story short, a Baptist preacher knocked on my brother's door. Like I said, we weren't looking for him, but Jesus was looking for us. His love was pursuing us. And that Saturday morning, April 1987, he shared the gospel with us, and my brother and I both came to a saving knowledge of Jesus. And, amen. I appreciate what Pastor Nelson just said, that what I was delivered from was sin and self-rule, to serve my King and Lord. And it's the best day that ever happened to me, and we've never looked back. Praise God.
Testing, testing. Okay, it works. Hi, guys. I'm a little nervous, so bear with me. Thank you. So I don't know if you guys have seen the story about my dad in our story, but he was in prison my whole life. He was incarcerated when I was five months old. So I grew up without him. He was just released 10 months ago. So, yeah, amen. Thank you. I also didn't really grow up with my mom. She was physically there, but she was not really there. I was raised by my mom, my mom's mom, so my grandmother. And growing up, it was like this tug of war. My dad's parents were involved in church, and they exposed me to God. And we actually started going to Pastor Marco's church, so I was exposed to this God, and I went back home, and I was in this toxic environment, and it was just this tug of war in my heart all of the time. And I decided that I wanted to leave Chicago for college, so I moved to California with my aunt, which was one of my dreams growing up, because I didn't like Chicago. And I was saved when I went to California, and I was looking for God. I really wanted to just free myself from everything that I have been through, everything that I had in my heart, all this resentment toward my dad, toward my mom, toward kind of my whole family, you know? I resented my dad for not being there and blamed him for everything that I'd been through, everything that happened to me. I was like, "He could have, you know, helped me by, by being there, you know? He could have protected me. He could have done this. He could have done that." But when I was saved, God showed me that he had been in my life the whole time, and he had been in my dad's life, you know, throughout his sin and throughout his life. And when I was saved, I was able to forgive my dad, and we were able to grow together. And since he was saved, he was kind of my mentor in a way, because he knew what to say. He knew what questions to ask me. So it was, it was really, it was special to me that I had that relationship, because my whole life, I wanted him to be there, and I wanted a dad. I needed that. And I was able to forgive my mom, although we, I mean, we have a relationship, but she's not saved, and she's still in her thing, but God was able to show me that. You know, growing up, she went through things that I, you know, didn't comprehend, so something like Pastor Nelson said, you know, with his dad. So my mom had been through things, and that's why she was that way with me. So I was just able to give this forgiveness to my dad, and God delivered me from like resentment, bitterness, anger, and, you know, kind of a broken heart my entire life. And I just thank him for that, because now he's showing me what he wants me to do, and it's just so special. And I'm really, really happy that I'm here today. So thank you very much.
My name is Bert Berrios. I grew up in Chicago. As she told you, I was in, I was in prison for more than two decades. My life is, you know, it's, it's not unique. It's very similar than a lot of kids in Chicago grow up. They get involved in gangs, and it leads you somewhere. That's, you know, the ultimate result of sin, period. So that was what happened with me. I had a 40-year sentence, and I was in prison, and while in prison, I was at this fork in the road, where I was either going to get worse or I was going to change. And I remember how God, you know, revealed himself to me. He first started showing me my decisions and the things that I thought were real or not. I would have probably never made that change unless I would have realized that first. You know, but God is God. He knows what he's doing. He knows our minds. He knows how we tick. He knows, you know, how we feel. He knows all of those things. So I think God had to understand me, I mean, excuse me, had for me to understand that everything I was serving was a facade. It was pretentious. It wasn't real. It was erroneous. And you know, before that, I had never realized that. So I found myself in segregation, which is the whole, you know, in, in prison, and I was going on a max transfer, or so I thought. And to make a long story short, that didn't happen. God started dealing with me right there in segregation. I started reading the Word right there in segregation, and it was for a gang activity, STG, Security Threat Group activity. And I remember reading this Word and how the Word like imparted directly exactly what I was going through. And there was some, you know, particular verses that stuck out. Jeremiah 29, 12, and 13. I know everybody knows 11, right? But 12 and 13, where it says, "When you seek for God with all of your heart, then shall you find him." So I guess the point is realizing that it's on us as well to pursue God as he pursues us. It's not a one-way street. It's a two-way street. And you know, when you read the Bible, there's a lot of ifs, you know, if, 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 you know, because it's part of the conditional promise God always gives us. And when he opens our eyes to exactly what Manny Mill had spoke about earlier, it's, it's one time. You never come back from that. It's one time. So that's exactly how he dealt with me. And, and it took me a while. Pastor Marco came to see me right after I got out of segregation. And if you guys have watched the video, I don't know who all seen it, but if you guys did, it explains everything there. It's an amazing story. Praise God. But you don't come back from that. You know, Manny said it very eloquently one time. So praise God. Amen.
So to make it quick, it's pretty much, I think we all could relate to an identity crisis, and Bert's mentioned this in the past. And I think, you know, and me growing up without knowing who my father was, and so that, that affected who I was to be, you know, my identity. And growing up in the city, you know, in poverty and gangs, I think the enemy tried to grab a hold of me and, and give me an identity. And I don't know if you guys know that, like, you know, like, before Christ, who you thought you supposed to be, you know? And that's how it was with me, and it affected me with choices that I made. And, you know, I think about when we're reading in Exodus, and, you know, "If only they knew their true identity." You know what I mean? "If only we knew our true identity, we would eliminate so much wrong that we have gone through and caused." You know what I mean? Like, cut the middle man out, in other words, you know, like, and, and reach that promised land. And, and so I was delivered from death, because that's where I was heading. I was heading on a path of death, and I'm sure everyone here can relate to that. You know, you don't got to be in gangs or selling drugs. You can be going through things with that identity crisis that will lead to death, because it could lead you into depression and bitterness and rage and anger to someone that God never intended for us to be, because we didn't know our identity. And then once you're saved, you know, God continues to reveal your true identity. Ain't that a blessing, where he continues to reveal who you are in his eyes? So now you can boldly enter into his presence. You know, when I didn't know who my father was, and I come from a culture where, you know, you need to know who your mom and dad are from, and, and then like, you know, "Okay, oh, wow, my family, they're, they're wealthy here, and they're wealthy there," and, and you know, it's like, "I'm not a nobody. I'm a somebody," but I didn't know these things. You know, I was born dirt poor and didn't have nothing, and so you walk around with your head down. And the devil was trying to give me an identity, said, "Don't, you don't got to put your head up, but what do you do? You got to, you got to kick and claw and beat and steal to be somebody," and that's not the way God wanted it. So I believe and I know that I was delivered from death and shame. Amen? I don't know if you guys know, but Carlos was a gang-banger, spent 20 years locked up, straight in prison. He killed his son, and they are here today. And guess what? Now he has adopted Carlos as his son. I mean, I told you, I told you, 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 I mean, you are sitting on the front seat of redemption today. This is crazy, isn't it? You need to watch the story on CononiaBankway.com. Their story, and of course, their story is just amazing. And we're going to, and now they are going into prisons, and they're going all over the world, because without forgiveness, we are not Christians. To be, I mean, we need to be forgiven, and we have to forgive others. So this is, so who was the first question? Anybody?
If you want them to hear you, it would be very helpful.
So guys, if you have questions, begin to line up behind Diana, so we don't waste time, okay? Please, we want to maximize every second tonight.
Thank you for stepping out of your comfort zone.
Hi. Not sure why I'm feeling so emotional, but I felt compelled to ask. I have been most impacted by Christians that have not always lived on the mountaintops, so all of you guys have been in the trenches, and I guess my question is, I believe that one time delivered, but how do you guys persevere? The Bible says that, "Do not be surprised by the fiery trials." And so I guess I would ask anybody that would be willing to answer. You guys have been through some pretty difficult things, and I think we'd be doing a disservice if we didn't share that, because just because we accept Jesus doesn't mean that this walk is going to be easy, and we can claim his promises, and we can trust in him and count on him, but it's rough. Life is rough still.
Keep the answer short, but to the point. Thank you, Diana. And as you know, her husband is locked up too. I mean, you guys know her husband. Of course, you say. So who wants to begin?
I can't.
Oh, look, look at this woman. Look at this, look at this lady. She was, she was nervous before.
You don't know the half of it. You don't know the half.
So to answer your question, for me personally, being at that very bottom...
So um, to answer your question, for me personally, um, being at that very bottom, as you described it, I think knowing that God is enough then, it's just, it's that's enough. Once I know that God is who he is, he's consistent, he's love, he's all these things that I've wanted and that we all want, that's when I was just like, what else do I need, you know? And of course, I'm not perfect and I don't always remember that. But at the end of the day, I'm like, I have God, you know? There's not anything that I have to worry about. So, if that answers your question.
Let me uh, say something because I was, I was reading the story and um, the spirit of God was putting in my heart. Because first of all, we have to, we have to want it. You know, we have to want this life. You know, you wanna, you, 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 you gotta, you gotta wanna live golly, you know, you gotta, you gotta want that in your heart, you know? That's, that's the first thing. Um, I, I was reading in Exodus 13, 3, I mean, 13, 3, 14 and 16. It said, "With a mighty hand, the Lord brought us out of Egypt,"
Hallelujah.
"from the land of slavery." With a mighty hand, three times, he says that. And the number three, hallelujah, is symbolic and, and, and the meaning of it is divine completion, okay? It's a resurrection power. So the Lord, he delivers you completely when you come to the Lord. He got the, he, he, he didn't do a half job. He's not like man, okay? He did a complete job, okay? And just like us, when we came to the Lord, what did it say? 2 Corinthians 5:17, it says, it says, "If anyone is in Christ, he is a new creature." Old things that passed away, all things have become new. So you're new. You're new in the spirit. Everything in the spirit, the Lord, the Lord already took everything out, okay? Now the battle is in the mind. The mind is, that's where the battle is at. You see? And that's why Paul, he says in, in Romans 12, 12, 2, he says, "Do not be conformed any longer to the patterns of this world, but be transformed by the renewing of your mind." Hallelujah. Then you will be able to test and prove what the will of God, pleasing and perfect will is. You see? So it's all about the mind. He says, "God did his part, but now you got to do your part." You see? We have to do our part. It's not just, I come to Christ and everything changes. It changed in the spirit. Now, through his word, I can manifest what's in the spirit to the natural. You see? And that, that's, that's where a lot of us get stuck. And then we say, I don't feel the change. This is not about feeling. This is about faith, this is about believing God, for the glory of God, hallelujah. And how do you do that? You do that by meditating on the word. He, the Lord told Joshua, which was, he was, he was, he was Moses' right-hand man. He told Joshua, and Joshua 1:8, "Meditate day and night in my word so that you can do what it says." See, so in other words, you gotta meditate in this word that the Lord has given us because you'll never walk, you'll never walk in the word if it does not enter into your spirit. You see? When you meditate on it, it'll get in your spirit. It's just, it's a seed. It might not happen right away, but with time, you continue to do it, next thing you know, that seed is gonna explode in your spirit and it's gonna start giving life. You're gonna start seeing yourself holy, seeing yourself doing what God's calling you to do. God's gonna give you word, God's gonna, but you have to meditate on it. And then he told, he told Joshua, "When you do this," he says, "you're gonna be successful in whatever you do and you're gonna prosper." See, so you meditate on the word, amen?
Yeah, thank you. I, I love that, the sowing and reaping aspect. Did anybody can answer this? Does God ever have a special way of letting you know he's there?
Go ahead, uh, go ahead, you know about that?
All right. I didn't know where you were pointing, you were looking that way a little bit, brother. Amen, um, uh, does God, yeah, he did, uh, I wrote a book while I was in prison. And I remember in the book I wrote, um, there was some times where I was, um,
What's the title?
Oh, the title is Redeemed and, oh, Amazony Books, Redeemed by Bert Alum Barrios, the author, for Christmas, $3.99. Don't get a cheaper gift than that, $3.99. Amen, brother. We're gonna have to do another town hall on the book one day. But uh, praise God. I remember telling someone uh, years ago, you know, you do a long prison sentence. Diana asked a question and made me think about my brother Modesto, you know? He, you know, he has natural life. And I use him as a matter of fact, but he's the perfect, you know, visual aid for this, right? Even Calito, Calito's my cellie for, you know, we were together for,
We're cellies.
Yeah, we're cellies. But I remember Modesto's big thing was, what did Modesto say all the time when he goes up to you? And Rallo too, our brother Rallo over there. Stay encouraged, stay encouraged. That's his thing, he'll come up with the biggest smile and the cheesiest grin ever, stay encouraged. You know? And here I am, about to get out in two years or whatever it was. And you know, sometimes you got your, you know, you, you, you hate waking up to that situation, you know? You get a little embittered, you get sometimes, even as Christian, even as a Christian, you know? And his brother used to minister to me without saying anything because that staying courage is coming from someone who has natural life, who according to the law or to, you know, this world, he's never getting out. Now, we're believing something different and we're believing God will move in his life surely, and in his case, surely. However, my point is, you know, that, that plays on your mind, that plays on your heart, that plays on your family, that plays on everything you do, it's always there. I know it. So from a guy like Modesto, who has that, that knowledge of what, you know, what, what the courts have given him and still has the courage and, and, you know, the spirituality to come up to a brother who's getting out in two years or one year or who, some guy who did three-year bid, which is nothing really in our eyes. I know you guys like, what? Three years? You kidding me? You get, you get what I'm saying? So it's, it, it was a blessing. Modesto had grasped and, and, and harnessed the knowledge of what, what it took to overcome by the blood of the lamb and the word of his testimony and revelation. So I hope I answered your question, my brother, amen?
One time real quick. I wanted to answer him. You know how God reveals himself to me? When I'm messing up, when I'm messing up.
When he's in prison, right now.
Okay, amen.
Now, right now.
Okay.
And now you're talking.
So you know, when I'm, you know how God doesn't want you to look to the right or to the left? And sometimes I happen to look to the side. God reminds me. And you have to listen to that because, you know, being saved, he's gonna tug at you. He's not gonna just, you know, he's gonna let you know, hey, I told you this before, you've learned this, you know this, you've been reminded. And that's how it's revealed to me because I need that. I need admonishment from the Lord, from my brothers and sisters. You know, that's how I know. That's one of the many, if you wanna put it in something, that's one of the many ways.
Sure, this, this might uh, just sound like a simplistic answer, but sometimes it's the simple things that we miss, right? And uh, the Bible says in James, chapter 4, um, James, chapter 4, verse 6, "But he gives more grace." "But he gives more grace." Therefore, it says, "God opposes the proud, but he, but gives grace to the humble." And then in verse 8, the Bible says, "Draw near to God and he will draw near to you." And I think it's important to know that, that we're not only saved by grace, but we're sustained by grace. The grace of God is sufficient for all things. And really, the Christian life is availing ourselves of God's grace every day. And we do that through prayer. And I have found that when we draw near to God in prayer, he draws near to us. But we also have to grow in our prayer life. And, and you know, if you, you study the, the Gospels, uh, uh, the, the disciples never asked Jesus, teach us how to preach or, or uh, he, he, the, the disciples asked Jesus, teach us how to pray. There was something, and, and by the way, they prayed, the disciples prayed, they knew, they knew how to pray, but they weren't getting a hold of God like Jesus was getting a hold of God. They didn't have that intimacy and that love relationship with the Father like Jesus. And they knew, they knew that they were missing the mark. And what did Jesus do? He obliged, he taught them how to pray. And I just wanna encourage you, you wanna know God, get alone with God. And just one more thing that I've learned about prayer is let God start the conversation. Because the one who tends to start the conversation leads the conversation. Pray with an open Bible, amen? Let God speak to you. And then whatever God is saying to you, pray that back to God, surrender to him, amen? His grace is enough.
Gentle women of God and men of God, we have met often week to week here at RTO, prayed fervently, urgently and consistently for the chains to be broken specifically, those that lead to recidivism and the return to prison. From the pulpit comes statistics like 65 to 70 to 75 or 80% of the men and women return to jail. Would you be willing to be transparent enough to share with us what in the world is that In you? And how do we fight it? Because it's in this gym tonight in this church. And there are men, maybe women, fighting that very battle. Thank you.
It's crazy because I remember um, hearing the recidivism rate in prison. And you know, they discuss how like, if you don't have no education, it's like 95% maybe, you know? And, and once you get a GED, it gets cut by more, you know? And then once you get a, um, a college degree, you know, it's even cut by more, you know? And so, but in reality, it's, what's keeping me from going to jail, it's, it's Christ. You know, Pastor said, you have to want this. And you know, we have to want this. And of course, we all have come to a point in our lives where we felt like there's no turning, you know, it's, this is rock bottom and, and I turn to Jesus. And that's how it's, it's been with me. But you know, we discuss identity and God has shown me, if I return to the mud that I once came from, it's death. It's death. But prayers kept me as well, you know what I mean? Prayers opened my eyes, you know? Our duty is to keep these people, men and women lifted up and of course, ourselves, you know, to continue to pray and without ceasing. That's the main thing because we've all had someone praying for us. You probably could think of somebody right now in your heart that used to pray, that still prays for you and you say, wow, God was listening to him or her prayers. You know what I mean? And sometimes God is just waiting for those prayers. Prayer, want, desire, that's how I look at it. Praise God.
In regards to recidivism, um, there's clearly some social, some serious social issues happening, you know, serious social issues in communities that people are in bondage to. The sum total of it is sin, surely. However, a lot of these people that I know, that we've talked to, that we've even worked with in programs when I was in prison, come, go back to that same neighborhood, go back to that same dysfunction, go back to the same family doing drugs, selling drugs, they go back to the same neighborhoods. And I'll tell you guys, in the city of Chicago, it's a, it's, it's not a good thing. It's not a good thing when you just did 10, whatever, three years, whatever you've done and you go back to something that's volatile like that, that, you know, anything can bring you back. So i- i- that's a complicated answer. However, Carlos hit it on the head. We're the minority. Our brother Rolando over there is with us tonight too. He did 25 years straight, you know, he's, we're the, he had a 50 year sentence. We're the minority, we're the minority here because it's not that we're doing anything great, that me, Carlos, Rallo, or anyone else who got out is this bright person or, you know, wow, you really got it together, guy, has nothing to do with that. We've made a, a, a conscious decision to say, I'm gonna serve Christ. If I gotta go flip burgers, if I gotta go, um, whatever it is I gotta do, because me and Calito work very hard. And it's not like, you know, we're rich or nothing, you know? We, we work very hard and Rallo does as well and, but God has blessed us. That's, that's all we ever wanted. A lot of guys might not have that opportunity or maybe don't have that wherewithal to do that. However, I'll tell you, um, a brother told me this, you know, he said, "Don't put a crackhead in the crack house." You get what I'm saying? So in other words, don't put someone who was in a bondage to gang banging, selling drugs, doing drugs, whatever it may have been, back in that environment. Give yourself a time to grow autonomous from that. And then when you're ready, when God shows you, you could come back to be a blessing, to be a blossom in that situation. But God has to lead you there first. So our decision along, when we were cellies, we even said, "I don't, I'll never want that." That means you gotta break some old habits, you gotta break some old friendships, even maybe family. But that's the decision you gotta make, to stay out and to not recidivate, amen?
Yeah, I'll, I'll say something real quickly. Sure, sure. Uh, we're talking about recidivism, um, there's, can I get an amen for this? There is one time deliverance in Christ. And I've had a front row seat in seeing, um, that deliverance. I'm, I'm blessed in my own life and the life of others. And, um, and so when, when we're saved, we're set free, as I said earlier, we, uh, from, from the penalty, we're set free from the penalty of sin, from the power of sin. But there's still that indwelling presence of sin in our lives. There's deliverance, but there's also an ongoing process of sanctification. And we need to grow in Christ, we need to grow in spiritual maturity. And so when somebody got, when someone, when someone gets out of prison, it's vital and I'm so glad that this is one of the, the values of Corner Knee House and RTO, is that they need to be men at the gate. And they need to be assimilated into, into a community of faith because God designed us to grow in our faith, in community with other believers. We need one another, amen? We need that radical love. That's the atmosphere that a believer thrives in. And that's why I'm so thankful for this ministry. That's why I believe Carlos is never going back to prison. That's why Nelson's never going back to prison. That's why Bert's never going back to prison. Because they're in that community of faith, experiencing that radical love of Jesus Christ.
They will go back to ministry. Hallelujah. In and out, in and out.
Let me um, say this, um, according to what we've been studying, Exodus 14.
Yes.
Okay, um, where Christians are going back to old things.
To Egypt.
They're going back to Egypt, okay? In Exodus 14, 5, Pharaoh asks himself a question. He says, "What have we done?" Right? He says, "What have we done? We have let the Israelites go and lose and we lost their services." In other words, we used to serve the devil. We used to serve the enemy. You see? And so now we serve God. So the, the enemy is mad, he's not gonna stop from, from coming after you. Because he lost a good man, a good woman, because you don't have to deal drugs, you don't have to be killing nobody, you don't have to go to prison, you can lie, you can be a liar, you can be whatever. A sin is a sin, it'll still take you to hell. You see? So whatever the habit is, okay? So the first thing that we have to recognize is that we have an enemy. You have an enemy that's not gonna stop. He's gonna come after you, hallelujah. Exodus 14, 13, it says that Moses told the people, "Do not be afraid, do not fear." He said, "Stand firm." it says that Moses told the people, do not be afraid, do not fear. He said, stand firm. Stand firm on what? We have to stand firm on the word of God, what God said. Okay? For instance, in Romans eight thirty-one, what does it say? It says, if God is for us, who can be against us? And thirty-two, it says like this, he who did not spare his own son, but he gave him up for us all, for all, all of us. Hallelujah. How will he not also, along with him, Jesus graciously give us all things? You see? Because even though we got an enemy, he's a defeated enemy. You see what I'm saying? So if we believe the word of God, see, you're never gonna, you're never gonna walk in the word of God if you don't trust in the Lord.
Amen.
If you don't trust in the Lord, if you, if you don't, if you don't believe the word of God. Hebrews, what does it say? Hebrews eleven six, it says, without faith is impossible, it's impossible to please God, because he that comes to God must believe. So believe is faith. You see? Believe. So it says, when you believe, it says, that God is a rewarder. He rewards you. You have to believe that he exists and that he rewards those who seek him. In other words, you have to seek the Lord. You have to live this thing. You just can't read this word. See, anybody in the world can read the word. The devil knows the word, but it has no benefit for them. But for the child of God, it has benefits. We can walk in this thing, and if we, we walk in and believe in God, not being moved by the situation in your life, but believe in God, then, okay, I'm in a situation, Lord, give me peace, because you are the prince of peace. Give me the peace that I need, and give me the strength, because you're my strength. You're the rock. You're my solid place, so that I can walk through this thing. I don't tell you, I'm not actually got to take me out. You see, because you got to go through. Nothing will enter in the life of the son of a son of God or a woman of God if it does not go through the hands of God.
I like that.
You understand that? Nothing could come into your life without permission. It has to ask permission, and when God permits it, it has a purpose. It doesn't come to kill you. The storm does not come to kill you. It comes to bless you. But you have to believe it. You have to believe it, and you have to walk in this. When you come out of the storm, you're gonna come out stronger, and you're gonna see that he don't have no power. The only power the enemy has is the power we give him. You see, fear is like faith to God. Fear is like, for the enemy, when you got fear, you open the door for him to come in.
Don't you love the passion and the commitment? Okay? Now here, it is now eight o'clock, and I know that we have to leave, but this is too good. So we're gonna be just a few more minutes, so just hold on. It doesn't happen every day that we have these five people here. Okay? So let's just hold on a little bit, a little patient right now. Thank you. Chuck is in the house. Amen? So we have a front seat to redemption, Chuck, tonight here. Amen? Look at these people over here, Chuck. Amen? Okay, let's go.
All right.
Who you are? Who are you?
My name is Romeo.
You did twelve years. You spent twelve years.
I gotta be honest, man. I feel like the Lord convicted me, hearing the testimony and the word that Manny's been given about deliverance, and you know, I've been walking with the Lord for a few years now, and He's done great things in my life. I was locked up like you brothers for a long time, but I gotta be honest that I've been carrying around some bitterness. And since I was young, I was under oppressive authority. And I'm not looking for no pity. That's not why I'm up here. But that's the reality of when I was young. Every authority that I ever been under, from my family, to police in the neighborhood, to schools, even to the programs that they put me in, the institutions that they put me in, struggled with a lot of people that was just oppressive with their authority. And I gotta be honest, when I seen Pastor Marco and heard the story, God was already working on my heart, because I never trusted no police, any authority, really. If I see like Brother Manny, he's got a heart for God, it's easy to submit, Neff. It's easy. But people that have been oppressive, that's where the bitterness came in at. And so, hearing everything, I feel like the Lord put it on my heart to stand up here and declare that out loud, because I believe too that, and have faith in God, that I don't gotta walk in that. So my question is for you, Pastor Marco, and I apologize personally, because there was bitterness and a hatred, not specifically towards you, but to authority. And I apologize right now and say that God wants me to love you guys, the same as I love everybody else. So I would just say that my question would be for foreigners, is that what would you say to a young man that's struggling with unforgiveness to authority? Because we see it today. There's a lot of people struggling with cops killing people, and we already know that there's good people that have those jobs. But what would you say to a brother that would be struggling with that?
Good question.
That's a good question. And there's a couple places in the Scriptures that I think of, Hebrews thirteen, where it talks about bitterness as being a root, the root of bitterness, springing up, and thereby many be defiled. It troubles you and defiles those around you when you have a bitterness. And also, I think of bitterness, the way that it starts, bitterness is the seed of a hurt that never gets resolved. And so, by the way, we all experience hurt, and we all go through tough things. Sometimes we get hurt by those who are supposed to protect us. And if we don't resolve that hurt, then that hurt can turn into bitterness. There's only one thing that can take care of that bitterness, and that's the grace of God. And Ephesians, chapter four, the Bible says, let all bitterness, and wrath, and anger, and clamor, and evil speaking be put away from you with all malice, and be ye kind one to another tender-hearted, forgiving one another, even as God, for Christ's sake, has forgiven you. And I believe that it's growing in the grace and knowledge of Christ, and being so overwhelmed with His love for you, and the forgiveness that you have that cost Jesus His life, is being gripped by the love of God that will give you the power to forgive and break the chains of bitterness in your life. So if you're struggling, amen, we could put our hands together, because it's about the grace of God. You know, let me just say it again, that we often think about grace as what saves us, right? Unmerited favor. God's riches at Christ's expense. But the grace of God and the way the Bible teaches about the grace of God is very dynamic, and it's the strength that we need to do everything that God wants us to do. And that grace is at the throne of God, and the blood of Jesus has given us access, amen, to the throne of God's grace. And when you're struggling with bitterness, you gotta get with God and avail yourselves of that grace that will enable you to forgive.
Well, we have one guest response real quick.
Okay, go ahead.
Go ahead, Ojo.
Keep it short.
Okay, short, short, short. I'm gonna try to keep it short as possible, guys. But I really, 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 really know that not only him, because I used to struggle, what Rome, man, Rome, Rome, Rome. Okay, not only you, Rome, but I used to struggle at the same time with the same thing toward authority figures, and specifically the police, because they are the reason that I feel, one of the reasons that I feel that I've been through as much as I've been through in my life, whether it be because I've done something, because I didn't do something. But specifically in walking with Christ, man, I just came through a situation like this, August the sixteen, two thousand and sixteen, I mean, August the nineteen, two thousand and sixteen, no, August the sixteen, two thousand and fourteen, I'm sorry, where I was pulled over, Rome, by the cops, wrongfully. They said, no taillight was out, no signal, all this other stuff. They tried to say all type of things. And I was just, I just knew my rights, and I was familiar with the law. So I presented that, and they didn't like it. And specifically, it was two white officers. And these guys literally beat me out the car, dude. Beat me out the car, said I had two hundred grams of cocaine, all this other. They looked at my background now. They went to go and check my background for my plates and all that other stuff, and they came back. I mean, no, they didn't. They hadn't done that. I guess they checked it while they was riding behind me, man, because they, it was totally off when they got to me. But you know what? The Lord helped me, bro. He really helped me to identify what it is, because He brought the Scriptures to my mind about what Jesus said. He said, for His name's sake, right? When we're walking for the Lord and doing the Lord's work for His name's sake, we shall be persecuted, ridiculed, mocked, and even martyred, bro. So He brought that Scripture to my mind in the instant, right? So I was able to identify, you know what I was telling these cops, man, when they had got me in the handcuffs and put me, about to transfer me to another car? I told them, the Lord is gonna redeem me. This will not be the last you see from me. At the time, Rome, this was two thousand and fourteen, my bond because of my background was a hundred and fifty K. I knew I didn't have that money, Rome, right? And anybody else in here, I knew I didn't have that money, right? God had divinely connected me with some brothers just like Manny and everybody else in here that I was working with on, for this organization called CRS, Community North Society. We fight on behalf of felons, helping to change legislation, with the reason why they can't ask whether you have a felony on your application or not anymore, with the reason why a lot of legislation toward felons is being changed right now. So that the guy, the owner of the, not owner, he's, I forget what it is. He, the director, that's exactly what he is. He's the director, Curtis DeYoung. This man knew me, and he said, Ojo did not do that. I'm going to get him. Three days later, I was locked up on the sixteen. I got bonded out on the nineteen, bro. Three days later, guess what? I don't know, I forgot about the time that I was in there. The time that I was in that room, I knew my assignment, bro. I knew my assignment was to encourage. I ganged three brothers while I was in there. One, his wife. Let me tell y'all this. This guy's wife, I didn't know him from Adam. Never seen his wife, guys. I told this man, I said, man, look, bro, the Lord just told me to tell you that your wife is pregnant right now, and she's going through pains. This man started breaking down crying, bro. He said, oh man. I said, why you crying, bro? He said, man, because my wife just called me and told me that she couldn't walk. I said, the Lord want me to pray for your wife, because she's in pain right now, and she's pregnant. He said his wife had just called him that, I mean, he had just called home, and his wife told him that she had to be escorted to the hospital because she couldn't walk. She woke up and couldn't feel her legs, bro. Right? So I ganged him as a brother, write him and stuff and stuff, still right now today, and I gained another brother that I knew from the world. His name was Larry, man. They were trying to pin three bodies on him. This was through Cook County. I knew my assignment, bro. I was able to identify this. I fell in love with being ridiculed, persecuted, persecuted and mocked for the name sake of Christ, bro, and that's where my comfort came from. I got comfort. I was able to prophesy. I was able to pray for people that was in my same predicament, my same position, going through what I was going through because of Christ, because of that comfort, bro. So be encouraged that that man is on your heels. He wants you to suffer in your unforgiveness. He wants you to suffer in your bitterness. He wants you to waddle in that thing. Why? So your gates are always gonna be clouded. Your eyes, your ears, and your mouth for the Lord is gonna be, man, I'm talking about cluttered, bro. Let it go. Amen? In Jesus's name, let it go. Hallelujah!
Yes, good evening. Yes, thank you. My name is David, and by the grace of God, I am grateful to say that He has given me a one-time delivery from the bondage of self-worship. Praise His holy name. I go to visit maximum security prisons, most notably Stateville, once a month, and I talk to hardened criminals with multiple life sentences, first-degree murders, really some horrible crimes. One of the things that we do to really get on a common ground, I'll ask them about their children, and that always gets them all lightened up. They can really get in a conversant mood. And by the grace of God, I was allowed to bring one man to saving faith in Christ. He's serving a life sentence for first-degree murder. And he asked me, he said, what do I tell my thirteen-year-old son? How can I be a role model for him behind bars with a life sentence like this? And that's a great question. And for those of you who've been there, how would you respond in a godly way?
Wow, that's a blessing to hear that, because you know, fathers, you know, we're in this society where, oh, I'm supposed to be a provider for my family, you know, I care for them. There's security, safety, and when we're removed from that, being in prison, you know, we couldn't be that to our family, our children, you know, they split us up. And I have a son, he's twenty-three now, and you know, I think about him, when you asked this question, I think about him how, at first, when I first went to prison, I wasn't serving the Lord, and you know, he's got, his father, just like her, you know, is in jail for twenty-something years of his life, because he was a kid, and mother was in and out of jail, drugs, so the odds were against this kid, if you think about it, you know, he's in, he doesn't really have a home. And when I got saved, when I gave my life to the Lord and surrendered to Him, God was showing me, because I was praying for my son now, but God was showing me how, you know, I was, see how my son was growing up and still surviving the odds, and you know, not in gangs, and not on drugs, and going to school, and He showed me, you know, I've been keeping your son. I've been watching over him. And now that you're saved, though, I want you to pray for your son. And that was a way that God revealed to me how I can be a provider for my family, you know? That prayer, because let's say my son came and said, I don't got no shoes, you know? I'd be like, oh, Lord, my son don't got no shoes, and I'd pray on it and figure out, what can we do, Lord? God will bring someone, because God's eye, His hand is bigger than all of ours. So He can do these things. And I think the sooner that I knew how I can be a provider by getting on my hands and knees, foot to the Lord, and praying for my family, the sooner I knew that, you know, I could be a role model to my kid in the door. Amen?
And then let me just say this. The last verse of the Old Testament, Malachia four six, is a promise. He says, God says, you all messed up, but I promise, I'm gonna turn the hearts of the fathers to their children. Hello! It's right here. Amen? And I'm gonna turn the hearts of their children to their fathers. Sometimes prison is good. I am thankful that I went to prison. Now, I didn't do twenty years. I only did less than two years, so I didn't do anything. I didn't do anything. I didn't do anything. But I was in prison before I went to prison, you know what I'm saying? And I didn't see my kids, as you know, for five and a half years. Manny Junior and Cecia, you know who you know now, Calito, and now they're both walking with Jesus. Now, who did that? I didn't do that. Jesus did that. And then Sacha, who found me, we prayed Malachia four six, and now she's in Christ Jesus. So it does happen. So that's a good encouragement, David, to you to give to the, to the guys. And thank you for going to Stateville. Amen?
Okay, this is the last question.
Last question from the mayor of Wheaton, right there?
That's the nickname. He's not actually the mayor.
No, he's the actual, he, he.
It's Manny. Manny's trying to give away political positions, and that's just not how it works.
He makes things. He runs DuPage County. He runs DuPage County. Come on, Joe.
So I want to talk a little bit about Nineveh and Jonah.
Yep.
We are, this country, a lot worse than Nineveh. And I ask you a question. What is revival? And do we need it? And I submit to you that this here is a little bit of an oasis, because we are in Christ here together. So therefore, the word speaks, my brother over there. My brother over there gets honest and is a witness as a result. So what is revival? And do we need it?
Okay, let's all answer that question, and then we're gonna end on that note tonight, on a revival note, and let's keep it short but sweet. Go ahead, Pastor Nelson.
First of all, the Bible says that the ground cries out, the ground, the earth cries out for men of God to rise up. Revival is when a man of God starts walking like God, in the name of Jesus, hallelujah. I want to say something, because I wrote stuff that the Spirit put in my heart. And if the Lord put it in my heart, it's for somebody here, okay? And the first thing that we have to know is that, that everything that comes out of us, deliverance, that comes out of us, there's spirits. Everything we were delivered from, there's spirits, okay? I just didn't get, delivered from anger, that was a spirit. You know, drugs is a spirit, everything that comes out of you is a spirit. And look what Matthew says, in the book of Matthew, hallelujah, 13, hallelujah, 43, it says, "When an evil spirit comes out of you, out of a man, it goes through a place seeking rest, but cannot find it." The only where, the only place he found rest was the place where he was assigned to. He was assigned to you. Whatever you were going through, whatever you were fighting, was assigned to you by Satan, okay? Satan is not like God, he can't be everywhere like God can be everywhere, but he sends spirits and he assigns them to you, okay? And then when you come to Christ, he delivers you, he takes those spirits out. So look what it says, hallelujah, it says, "He cannot find it," then he says, "I will return to my house." "I will return to my house." He's saying that, he's still, even though you're saved, even though you're saved, that spirit is calling you His house. You see? And the Bible said that he comes back, look what he says, it says, he says, "I will go back where I left." When it comes, it says, "When it will return to the house, when it arrives, it finds the house," it says, "clean, swept clean and put in order." It says that when he comes back, that means that whatever comes out of you, whatever comes out of you will always come back. That's why you could go five, 10 years, and this happened to me. Sometimes, I, you know, 10 years later, I wake up sick like if I needed drugs, and that's the spirit that's present. You see? And it says, it said that he finds the house clean. That means that it's clean, it has no prayer in it. It's clean, it has no, it has no fasting in it. It's clean, it has no word of God in it. You see? No service of God. You see? There's no evidence. So he says that, look what he says, he says, hallelujah, he says, "Then it goes back and takes seven other spirits more wicked than itself, and they go and come back and go into the man, and the man is worse than his first date." See? He comes back, that's why we have to be real. One more verse, and I'll pass it on. 1 Peter 4:7, look what it says, "The end of all things is near, therefore be clear-minded, be clear-minded, self-control." It says, "So that you can pray."
Amen.
"So that you can pray. Anytime you feel the presence of the enemy," because let me tell you, the greatest promise in the Bible, the greatest promise in the Bible is, "I will be with you to the end."
That's it.
That means that God's presence is with you all the time, even if you don't feel it, God is there.
Yep.
So when the enemy comes and you feel that, that temptation, you feel that, that battle inside of you, throw yourself on your face and call on Almighty God.
Amen.
The Bible, he told, he told them, he told them, the Egyptians, he told them in Exodus 14, the Lord told the Israelites, "I will fight for you."
Yep.
He'll fight your battle. You don't have to fight, all you have to do is submit to the Lord.
Good counsel. Thank you, Pastor Nelson. Love your passion.
Praise the Lord. Revival.
Revival.
So many things I could say, but I believe that revival is, as someone once said, is an increased awareness of who God is, that leads to an increased love for God, an increased hatred for sin, and a hunger for God's Word.
Love it.
And, you know, someone said that we can't dictate or manufacture the winds of revival, that's a work of the Holy Spirit, but we can raise the sails so that when God decides to bring that revival, we're waiting for it, amen? We're prepared for it, we're crying out for it, and I do believe that one of the key ways to see revival come to, first of all, to our individual lives, and even to a country as we've seen in the past, Great Awakenings, it always starts with prayer, amen? It always starts with prayer. I'll just read one verse real quick, in Isaiah, chapter 57, the Bible says, "For thus says the one who is high and lifted up, who inhabits eternity, whose name is holy, I dwell in the high and holy place, and also with him, who is of a contrite and lowly spirit, to revive the spirit of the lowly, and to revive the heart of the contrite one." What an amazing scripture, that the God who transcends the universe dwells in the heart of the broken, the humble, the one who knows, "I need you, God, come. If you don't come, I'm in trouble, come, Lord. If you don't come to this nation, we're in trouble, come, Lord." God's people need to cry out, amen?
Grace, come on, Grace, give us a response. We have three more answers.
Revival for me is kind of similar to what Pastor Marco just mentioned, that wanting to be like God, wanting to know God, wanting to be in His presence consistently, and wanting to read His Word, and that's getting to know Him as well, and wanting to do His work, having different mercies on people than you've, that you've had before, you know, just being patient and just being like God. And for me, that's revival, because that's growing closer to God and growing more like God. So for me, that's what revival means.
Thank you, Grace. Bert is also a theologian.
Amen.
If you guys know.
Amen. So the man of God asked about Nineveh, you know? God commissioned this country to be like Jonah, and we turned it to Nineveh. Ain't that something? What happened with Jonah? He didn't want to prophesy into Nineveh, because they were so evil. He seen them as a country that didn't deserve God's grace or mercy. And you might be right, yeah, we are worse than Nineveh, you know? So we were supposed to be like Jonah, and we turned to Nineveh, right? What does revival mean? It means to live again. It means to be revived from something, right? From maybe even death, except the way God intended us to live. So sometimes we're still living, you know, like we intended or how we want, but God intended a different purpose, a different way of life that we may not even see. So revival for me is living as God intended me to live. And then, once I get it right here, I can start reviving others through the true gospel of Christ and Jesus' name.
Love it. Come on, Kalito, give us the final.
What they all said, no, no, just. I think about, you know, when you hear about, like, people get flatlined and they put those paddles, and then they bring them back to life, you know? And think about Lazarus, how he called them out of his name to come out of the tomb, he called them by his name. And we all were called by our name, we've been revived, made alive, you know, we were once dead, to the point of being flatlined, and Christ came and revived us. And just this nation is in serious need of revival, the whole world. It's gonna continue to get worse, you know? Many are called, few are chosen, you know, few have been revived. And that's what it is, you know? We have been made alive. Think about it, Adam, he breathed life into him, his spirit, he breathed it. We need his breath in our lungs. It needs, that's revival. We need this. God called us by name, and now He's using us to call others by their name, amen?
Amen.
Amen.
You want to say something? You want to say something? Quickly.
For me, revival is to live God's Word, walking with the challenge. Because we can know the Word, but if we don't live it, if we don't walk it, there's nothing, it's dead. And then we gotta live it with our neighbor, right here.
Thank you, Beatrice.
Amen.
Just so you know, that wonderful woman right there, she goes into Cook County Jail, Division 9.
And 11.
With those, and 11, with those thugs. That woman had no fear in her. Chuck, will you come here and will you close us? I'm gonna ask our board chairman, who I know is excited tonight, he's excited tonight, amen? Jose Cook tonight, Jose Cook tonight, amen? But before, this is Chuck Martin, he's our board chairman, amen? Let me say this, guys, I think that Romeo reminds us tonight what true revival is, is called repentance. Repentance. Yes, repentance, Becca. The Bible says, "If my people," not the pagans, the church, "if my people, who are called by my name, will humble themselves, huh, and what, and pray," right? Will humble and pray, then he says, "Ay, Yahweh," we've been what? We've been healing, healing, and guys, we are sick. Have you noticed, as of late, everybody's confessing? You know why? They get caught. Christians usually confess when we get caught. Don't wait until you get caught, begin to confess now, so you can walk light, so you can be delivered, so you, so the chains can go down and you can be free, amen? How many feel a little lighter tonight, a little lighter tonight, eh? You feel light, uh-uh? Could we give God a hand for these wonderful five people here, amen? Amen? Okay, wait a minute, we're gonna, we're gonna give things, we're gonna give our final benediction. Do we have ice cream? Okay, so from Neff, from, you're gonna go to Neff, and then we're gonna, and then we're gonna fellowship, and they'll be here until they get kicked out. They'll be here, go ahead, Chuck.
Lord, we love you. Father, we are so grateful that you are Lord of our lives, that you are, that your Word is true. Lord, I just, I see this group up front tonight that is a, is a picture of your Word, is a picture of the truth of your Word, and the obedience to your Word, and what you do and how you fulfill your promises to those who are obedient to your Word. But I just, I am personally blessed at seeing this and knowing this, and just being able to be a witness, to testimony of your goodness and of your redemptive power, your Holy Spirit, the work that you do in the lives of those who cry out to you, who are fully dependent on, who surrender their lives to you, Lord, you are, you are awesome. Your power is perfect. You are, Lord, we just, we praise you tonight. We praise you for who you are. And, Lord, we confess before you that we are sinful, broken people, and that we can't do nothing without you. We cry out to you tonight that we don't want to do anything without you. Lord, we need you. We talk about revival tonight, Lord, we want revival, or our hearts cry out for revival. We want to see our churches completely sold out for you, completely surrendered to you, completely dependent and desperate for you, Lord, because it's only, it will only happen because of you. Lord, call your people to their knees, call the people here to, haul us to our knees tonight and beyond tonight, to continue praying for revival. And I agree with my brothers and sisters on their definition of revival, Lord, it's just, it starts with each of us. Lord, use us, bring us to greater things for your name, and let us have opportunity to share that with others, to share your love, your truth, your power with others, that your light, the light of Christ would burn brightly, shine brightly within us, and just that your grace, your power, your mercy would pour out of us because of what you are doing in our lives, and just, it's not us, it's you. Lord, as we abide in your vine, may you bear much fruit in our churches, our communities, our neighborhoods, in our workplace. We pray this in Christ's name, amen?